Okay, we don't want to keep people waiting here. Okay. I now call this meeting to order. Good evening, welcome back. It's the first week of school, I hope it's going well for everyone. Mr. Jaramillo, can you take role?
Sure. Ms. Dahman.
Here.
Mr. Castro.
Here.
I am here. Vice President Frank.
Here.
President Flores.
Here.
Madam President, we have a quorum.
Thank you, and let's stand for the torch.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oops. I skipped over welcoming Cameron. Cameron is back as our student advisor, and from Centennial. So now a junior, right?
Yeah, thank you, thank you. I haven't even done anything and I'm getting applause.
No, there you go. That's a mess thing.
I told you, you're gonna have my job before you graduate.
We go on to approval of minutes. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes for April 4th, 2017 special meeting work session, the June 1st, 2017 board training, the June 6th special meeting work session, and the June 20th, 2017 regular board meeting.
May so move.
Okay, Mr. Jaramillo and Mr. Castro, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So the minutes are approved. I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Okay, we have a first from Mr. Frank and from Mr. Castro, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and so the agenda is approved. I will move on to consent items. I will entertain a motion to approve consent items for D1, approval of budget adjustments, 42, ratification of budget adjustments, 43, approval of property dispositions, 44, approval of June vendor payments, 45, approval of July vendor payments, 46, approval of bids, 47, approval of finance advisory committee meeting schedule, and 4G1, approval of Title IX assurance for secondary school athletics. So moved.
Second.
We have a first from Ms. Dahman and a second from Mr. Jaramillo, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that passes. The board met in closed executive session on August 15th, 2017, from 5:05 PM to 6:29 PM to discuss limited personnel matters, specifically so that the superintendent can update the board regarding investigations of certified and classified employees, as well as inform the board of specific employee movements, as permitted under Section 10-151H2 of the New Mexico Open Meetings Act, to discuss communications with legal counsel regarding pending or threatened litigation, specifically due process hearing complaint, DPH number 1718-03, and settlement agreement and release between Teachers Publishing Group Incorporated, DBA Stenhouse Publishers, Jeff Anderson, and Las Cruces Public Schools, as permitted under Section 10-151H7 of the New Mexico Open Meetings Act, to discuss personally identifiable information about an individual student, including information protected by the attorney-client privilege, as permitted under Section 10-151H4 of the New Mexico Open Meetings Act, and to discuss collective bargaining strategies preliminary to bargaining negotiations, as permitted under Section 10-151H5 of the New Mexico Opens Meeting Act. I didn't miss anything there, did I?
There was a lot to read.
I was distracted, so do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Frank.
Second.
And Mr. Jaramillo, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and, well, we don't have to, we didn't have to approve that, but we did anyway.
Carrie Swarley.
So that moves us on to public input. And before we move, before we start, I would like to remind our audience of the board's procedures for handling public comment, which are found in Board Policy, BEDH, and on the sign-up card. Each speaker must complete a sign-up card, and I have two here. Prior to speaking, public comment is limited to three minutes per individual speaker and five minutes for each group spokesperson. The board welcomes public input. The board does not prohibit public criticism or comment upon personnel matter. However, any person making public comments shall be solely responsible for the content of his or her comments. The board neither adopts nor assumes responsibility for any comments made by individuals during the public input section of the board meeting. And I have Ms. Par Sanchez, please, to the podium. Or, do we have testing on the agenda?
Do you want to speak during my presentation?
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, then I'll go ahead and go to Mr. Griffin, Don Griffin, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to bring to your attention the current policy now, as it stands, where my daughter Cora is beginning her sophomore year at Arrowhead Park, and she's played tennis through middle school, and now cannot participate because she's attending Arrowhead. This is because there exists a gap, I guess you could say, in the rules, where Arrowhead Park is considered a school of choice, whereas she would be allowed to participate, as would the other students, if it were considered an alternative school. There is another early college high school in the state of New Mexico, Rick Carlisle's Pat, and they are, they have carved out spaces in their schedule for their students to participate in sports with Carlisle's Pat High School. When they break away, they'll be considered an alternative school, and so they'll be allowed to participate in their district with sports. Now, I believe the history here is that when Arrowhead was begun, it was thought that it'd be a good idea that students be limited, and there are extracurriculars that they'd be allowed to pursue, but I think that time has passed, because, well, first of all, there's another school that does exactly that. Second of all, the, there are many programs, clubs, activities, all extracurricular activities that the students in Arrowhead can participate in, such as even an archery club, travel club, things that take time, and the supervision of the staff. Participating athletics would not make any other draws on the staff, because they'd be participating in the schools in which they reside. And they'd also benefit from the opportunity to compete and participate in the athletics. I just wanted to bring to your attention, and I think that we should be in the business of allowing more opportunities for our students, rather than limiting their opportunities. The expectations and the responsibilities for the students would remain the same, as I see it, because the opportunities for students in the other public schools that are out there, they have a choice whether to participate in sport or, if there is a conflict, to pursue an academic goal. That would be the same for the students in Arrowhead, and...
Just finish your thought.
So I would encourage the board to consider allowing the students the same opportunities that they're afforded in the other public schools.
I just have one question. What grade is your daughter in?
She's starting her sophomore year.
Okay. Sophomore, thank you. Okay. Okay, and we will then continue. Did you have any comments in that regard, Dr. Ewing, or not?
No, I'll direct staff to make contact with the parent who spoke tonight. We'll certainly look at the situation, and we'll also confer with the principal at Early College and determine why that policy was put in place as it was. And from my chair, we're always gonna do what's best for children. So we'll certainly look into it and have folks respond. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ewing, and so now it's your report.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, members of the board, and to our audience. The first item I'm gonna start with tonight, Madam Chair, I'm requesting permission, I'm going to identify administrators who have recently been reassigned or promoted. I'm going to call them forward. Those administrators will come forward to the board, be formally recognized by the board, and you'll walk down the dais and shake each of our hands. If you'll just begin lining up here by Dr. Serrano, I'm gonna call your names, and then we'll let you all come down at once. It's my pleasure tonight to report to the board that we have made 18 appointments since our last board meeting, and we're very proud of these individuals. And so if you'll line up in this order, please. Dr. Jennifer Han, reassigned as Executive Director for Bilingual and Migrant Education, reporting to Dr. Roberto Lozano. Ms. Heather Kingry, reappointed to Executive Director of Leadership, overseeing all middle school principals. Mr. Ramon Benegas, appointed as Assistant Principal at Alameda Elementary. Ms. Amanda Castillo, appointed as Assistant Principal at Booker T. Washington Elementary.
Shake her hand.
Mr. Michael Chodas, appointed as Principal at Central Elementary School. Ms. Lisa Dominguez, appointed as Assistant Principal, Central Elementary School. Ms. Sonia Campos, appointed as Principal, Conlee Elementary School.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Ms. Sandra Montoya, appointed as Assistant Principal, Conlee. Ms. Karen Height, interim principal, Hillrise Elementary School. Ms. Evangeline Barella, Principal at Hornada Elementary School. Ms. Nicole Bailey, Assistant Principal at Hornada Elementary.
Congratulations.
Ms. Stephanie Hanway, Assistant Principal at MacArthur Elementary. Ms. Tara Faber, Assistant Principal at Tomba Elementary.
Good to see you, congratulations.
Ms. Sadie Ortiz, Assistant Principal, University Hills Elementary. Ms. Eloisa Solis, Principal at Valley View Elementary. Mr. Luis Mesa, Assistant Principal at Valley View Elementary. Ms. Julie Majestas, Principal, White Sands Elementary.
Congratulations.
Mr. Joel Aguilar Villanueva, Principal at Zia Middle School, and Assistant Principals at Las Cruces High School. Ms. Anne Marie Mora, Ms. Chris Grubbs, and Mr. Bobby Campos. Congratulations to all these administrators.
Congratulations. Enjoy.
Congratulations.
I'll have to come see you, that was my school.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. One more. Thank you.
Yeah, I called her, Karen Height.
Joan Howard.
And what school?
Highland.
And Ms. Joanne Howard, as Assistant Principal at Highland Elementary. Principal, sorry. Well, get your title right. Welcome.
Congratulations.
How are you? Good to see you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, administrators.
Half the audience has gone in.
I know. We're so boring.
All right, Madam President, they're getting ready for school tomorrow.
I know, we understand.
We've had them busy the last couple of days. All right, now, continuing. Madam President, I just wanted to announce to the board, and actually to the public, you've heard me talk about teaching and the importance of teaching, and the fact that I consider myself a teacher before anything else. This fall, I'm pleased to announce to the board that I have joined the faculty of Doña Anna Community College, teaching a course there in the Education Department. The pay at a community college is not anywhere near the pay here. Our pay's not so great, but theirs is even lower. And I did tell that to the college president last night. But I am going to announce tonight to the public, and I'm going to give a challenge to my executive cabinet and to the cabinet members, that my pay from Doña Anna this fall semester for the course I'm teaching, I'm going to donate to the Student Foundation with the understanding that it be used for the student advisors. So Cameron, I'm working for you. As I leave work here, and I'll go teach from, I think it's 5:00 to 6:00 PM on Wednesdays, but that will not be work for me, that will be pleasure. And then whatever those few dollars are, we'll use that for the travel for you for the year, so...
Wow.
Well, Madam President, Dr. Ewing, if I could, thank you very much on behalf of all of the students, the students that were in the process of assembling right now, is deeply appreciated. And it truly is a testament to your character as an educator, a person who's never stopped being an educator, although you've been an administrator for 16, 17 years. Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you. The next one is a budget update, so I just want to notify the board and the public. We did turn in a balanced budget to the board. We have balanced the budget with the funding that we had. There was a law that was passed that was signed by the governor in which the SEG was increased by $16 per child. For our district, we think this equates to approximately $700,000. The governor, when she signed the bill, did cross out the date of July 1, which is when the fiscal year begins for school districts. We have made contact with the Public Education Department to ask when we might expect our $700,000 check that we desperately need to hire more teachers. And at this indication, the Public Education Department has told us that they are, at this point, there is no plan to issue that money. And so here we are on the second day of the school year, and we're already fighting for money that's entitled to the district. We will continue to ask questions, we will continue to ask if we are going to receive what was entitled to us. We're going to continue to cite the law as our source, and we are hopeful that our friends at PED will be able to give us some answers that I can report back to the board. Once we know that funding is coming, then we will certainly convene a meeting with our representatives from NEA and CSEC. We will look at that $700,000 as an expenditure, and then we will come before the board and make recommendations as to what we actually do with that funding. Also want to announce to the public today that we've had a team of, Crystal, help me, six auditors or eight? How many were?
Six.
Six, so we had six auditors in the building from an outside accounting firm, and those auditors were charged with looking at all of our records, all of our receipts, and all of our books for the last year. They're concluding that audit now, we'll get the report back in November. And what we're looking for is the audited cash balance, that is, the excessive cash that's in our bank account that we did not account for as we did our budget. Once we know what that amount is, we will then come before the board with our list of priorities with that funding. In anticipation of that audit, I did convene the executive cabinet in a session last week. We met for three hours, and then we invited our assistant superintendents, our president of NEA, Las Cruces, as well as our president of CSEC, Las Cruces, and the student advisors, so we had Cameron and Max with us. And we charted out what we could do with that money, and what the use would be. I can tell the public that, first and foremost, the use really needs to be in additional teachers. We need additional teaching positions. We did budget 10 teaching positions in our allotment pool and in our budget. We gave all of those out before the first day of school, rightfully so, so principals could hire individuals. We have begun school, and now Dr. Miller Tomlinson and her staff are carefully analyzing the class size in every school to see if we can move a teacher, if we have a class of 10 somewhere and a class of 40, if we can begin to equal some things out. We certainly don't like to move teachers after the 10th day of school. That causes disruption for schools, for principals, for children, for families. On the other side of the coin, one teacher with benefits costs the district $75,000 per year. So if we need an additional 10 teachers, that's $750,000. So you see how quickly those dollars add up. Now, if you talk to teachers, they're going to say, I don't earn $75,000 a year. I need to make sure the public understands that 40% of their salary is benefits. So when we begin looking at hiring individuals, if we were to hire you at a $50,000 job, we also have to pay $20,000 in benefits. So it adds up very quickly. Once we have an idea of what that audited cash balance will be, we will come back together as a group. Those same individuals will look to make some recommendations, and then we will actually come before the board. And I have said that before we do anything with cash, we're gonna ask the board for a formal vote and formal approval. But the most important thing is for us to be transparent as we go through the process, and to work with our partners at NEA and CSEC, Las Cruces. Next, I want to update the board on the grads program, and I may need to get some help from staff as we do this. But the grads program is a program that we have in place in schools. It was, of course, working beautifully, one of the better programs we have in place. And our U.S. Secretary of Education, Betsy DeVos, has cut that program. That program was being used to work with students to lower pregnancy rates among teenagers in high school, and to assist those who have already had children. We did receive a call from our colleagues at PED- We did receive a call from our colleagues at PED. They did give us an early indication that that program funding was going away. It was going away at the beginning of this year and that they were working as expeditiously as possible to find an alternative source so that we would not have to absorb that. I believe I'm correct in saying we have three staff members funded through that program. We are now applying for a grant through PED at their request where they would continue to cover those salaries. We have made an emergency budget contingency plan in the event that something goes wrong with that grant. I want to assure those employees that we have no intention of shutting the program down. I have no intention of moving this away. It's a program that's working. It's a program that I would ask that our Secretary of Education reevaluate for the benefit of children. But I do want to notify the board that the funding has gone away. We are applying for a backup grant and we are making a commitment to those individuals already employed that we will keep the program in place this year. For next year, we will have to incorporate whatever we need in our budget based on the type of grant we receive from PED. Any questions on grads from the board? And Madam President, next, I would like to work on a presentation that we've put together. This is a testing unit. And so I'm going to start by saying that this is the first of many presentations to the board so that we can make the board and the public aware of exactly what we're doing with testing. And I also want to say that this is not just a presentation. I just don't want this to be a group of slides in front of us. I want there to be action from what we're seeing here. And I want to begin by giving background, and it may take me a couple of board meetings to do that. I want to thank Albert Vega, who makes all my slides and make them look like that I've done a beautiful job and all. And public, give him that credit that I really just sat down with a note paper and used my classical training and write on paper and he produces what we're seeing here. And I also want to thank Ms. Amy Simpson from NEA, who's not here tonight, but Amy provided me with much information. And Amy and I have been communicating over the last month of what this presentation should look like. Unfortunately, Amy is traveling tonight. I would say if she were here, and I'll use the subjunctive, I would ask Amy to do the speaking and it would be a much better presentation than what I'm going to do. But Amy, this presentation is brought about because of your persistence and your conversation with me about what we should do for testing. And so I thank Amy and I thank NEA. And so now, Madam President, as we begin to look at testing, if we can move the next slide, first, I just want to show you what the testing window looks like versus testing time in the schools. So you're going to see on this presentation the assessments. So we see IStation, we see Park with English Language Arts and Math, we see SBA Science, we see SBA Spanish Reading, we see end of course tests, we see access testing for our English language learners, and we see IPT. We see that the district testing window involves anywhere from two to four weeks. We see that some tests have one unit, some tests have as many as four units. We see that each unit takes anywhere between thirty minutes and ninety minutes. And we see in total testing time, anywhere from thirty minutes up to two hundred and seventy minutes. So you're beginning to see as a board that in classrooms, there are lots of days and lots of minutes taken for testing. If we go to the next slide. The average number of days reserved for testing, this is information given to us by administrators. These are not teachers, but these are administrators in the district. Fifty-one percent of the administrators in the district participated in our survey and told us, on average, with all assessments, we're using approximately thirty-nine days of instruction. That's two full months of school reserved for nothing but testing. Now, that's the total average of all assessments. The average of assessments not required is twenty-five days. The average of assessments required is thirteen point five. As the board knows, I've given many, had many conversations and speeches. I firmly believe that the principal is the instructional leader of the building. I don't believe in micromanaging principals, but I also have had conversations with principals that I believe in teaching, not testing. And so I've encouraged principals to only give those tests that are required and to begin pulling back on tests that are not required. And we have to look at what is the original intention of a test? Why do we have a test? And what are we doing? But when principals tell us, and these are folks not even in the classroom, but these are principals saying that they see forty days, thirty-nine days, being reserved for testing, to me, that's excessive. If we go to the next slide. The next question we ask, are computer labs reserved for testing? And we received a ninety-six percent response rate. So that tells us that four percent of the schools possibly have a higher student to device ratio where they can use a device per student to give a test. The rest of the schools are using our labs. So instead of using a lab for teaching and learning, we're using our labs for testing. This is another concern. If we go to the next slide. The main assessment that the state requires is something called PARK, the Partnership for Assessment of Readiness for College and Careers. The PARK assessment was originally intended as an assessment for private schools to compare the student performance of schools from, throughout the world, so that elite children around the world in elite private schools could compare their results. It was never intended to be used as an assessment in a district that we're talking about today with seventy-eight percent poverty rate. With the PARK assessment, in two thousand and ten, twenty-four states were using the assessment. And as you can see, as the years have continued, we're now down to two thousand and seventeen with only seven states seeing that that test is really the test that they desire as a test. And so this is a question I think we have to ask our state legislators, we have to ask our state education officials. If twenty-four states started and now we're down to seven, why are we one of the seven continuing a test that principals, teachers, and students are telling us is not the most valid instrument to be used? If we go to the next slide. These are the assessments being used across the state. And what you're going to see is most states are developing their own assessment. So you see seven with PARK and then all these with one, these are where states have come up with their own types of tests. And there's various tests used in various states. Go to the next slide. And then we see that same information here again. These are grades nine through twelve. We only see six states using the PARK assessment. So we're still using PARK even in high school. Go to the next slide. So what are the issues with PARK testing? So grade five math, I'm going to talk about the Unit Three test. We had a problem where one question would not load on some computers. So we had students taking a test and then they had to skip the question to finish the test. Then we had to try to send the results, we had to call our Santa Fe office, and then students had to log back into the test on an iPad to complete the test question. So those of us on the board who've been teachers, we know that the relevance of that test is already over. And we know that if you took a test on a computer and then you had to log out and then you had to get an iPad, think about the time, think about the test security, okay? You could look up the answer or ask your friend while you're logging in. And this is just one issue. Troubleshooting by Technology Support Services and District Testing Coordinator. There are multiple phone calls to Pearson, the company that coordinates this test, and we have to bypass some of the instruments that have been put in place. It's not an issue of technology at the district level. It's an issue of when we all hit send at the same time, there is no capacity in the state to accept all of those answers. So once again, I call this an unfunded mandate, where you've asked us to do something, we comply, we use all of our computers for this time, and then we hit send at the same time and then we jam the system and we have to call for help and then we have to begin bypassing issues here. And then we're having to use computers that do not have the Edge Point antivirus software. And as you know, if you have read the news lately, whomever they are, there are hackers around the world who are sending us viruses. And if you click on the virus, Paramount Studios was shut down and other companies have been shut down. And so it makes us very nervous to allow children on a computer that doesn't have proper antivirus software. One, that a hacker could get in, but two, we certainly don't want children going to websites that we can't shut down or control ourselves. But this is what we're being forced to do just in order to give this one test. I wanted to show the board the device to student ratio. So currently, the Las Cruces Public Schools has fourteen thousand devices available for testing. That's approximately one device for every two students. If we were ever at a ratio of one to one, we could reduce the days needed to testing at all grade levels to three days for PARK and then you see one day for the respective tests remaining and two days for our ESOL students. Now, I need to remind you that you think about buying fourteen thousand computers and the money we have spent and then think what it's going to cost to buy another ten thousand computers. And so we have to ask ourselves, is that really the most fiduciary component of what we would do with our funding? When we look at all of our needs, we look at the needs of individuals, but in order to move the testing days to a much lesser window than what we're doing, we would need a one-to-one device. Okay, next slide. So why are we giving online tests instead of paper and pencil? Now, I argue that I would rather take a paper and pencil test. And we actually called PED to say, can we return the paper and pencil test? So the answer is no, you cannot. And that I do need to remind the board, when we were doing that, it took two tractor-trailer trucks, those are eighteen-wheeler trucks. It took two of them to bring us all the testing materials and two of them to bring all the materials back to Santa Fe. And the folks in the back of the room are looking at me thinking, you'd never want to go back to that again. And so that's why we're doing online testing. It does save nine dollars per student, but I need to show you that to save nine dollars per student, we have to spend millions of dollars on new computer devices. I also would argue that some students are going to do better on paper and pencil than they are on computer because that's the way we are teaching them in school. So we're teaching them with paper and pencil, we're giving them a traditional background and a traditional education, and then we put them on a computer for the first time to take a test. And I think the board remembers, I told the board, I was in a middle school math classroom, I watched them take their Algebra I end of course test, I watched the anguish of the students, I watched the frustration, and quite honestly, I watched their fear. At the end of the session, they hit send and the entire thing shut down. So when we called PED, the instructions were, just have them take that test tomorrow. Well, if I were a student, the first thing I'd do is go find the math teacher and teach me all the problems that I didn't know. So once again, the reliability and validity of the test is going to come into question. If we go to the next slide. So what is the cost of testing? This is the district's cost. This is not the state cost. This is what you have spent as a school board on testing. In two thousand and eleven, you spent six hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. In two thousand and thirteen, you spent eight hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. I could have hired a hundred teachers for eight hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. And as you see now, in two thousand and sixteen, Dr. Stephen Sanchez became our interim superintendent and you're going to see that Dr. Sanchez spent two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars on testing. And I'm going to say in two thousand and eighteen, under my leadership, we're projecting two hundred and forty-two thousand. So you can see that we have significantly reduced what we're spending, but I do need to caution the board, this is only the district's proportion of what we're spending. Our Public Education Department is still spending money from their own funding and this does not count all the hours that we're paying teachers who could be teaching instead of delivering these tests. If we could go to the next slide. Now I want to show you some test results. So this is the PARK third grade reading proficiency. And if you look at the bottom, you see fourteen, fifteen, fifteen, sixteen, sixteen, seventeen. Those are school years. For the last school years, our numbers have stayed quite the same. Statistically, there's not much significance between twenty-two percent proficiency rate to a twenty-nine point six to a twenty-seven point four. If any doctor were to look at these tests, if they were administering medicine to us, they would say, either the medicine I'm giving you is not working or the test I'm using is not measuring what I need to measure. Yet we continue year after year to use the same test and we're not seeing any better results. So then we have to ask ourselves, is the test really measuring reading proficiency? So we talk about reliability and validity. Or are we having a problem in teaching reading? And if we're having a problem, then what other multiple assessments could we use to actually see if this one test is giving us the results we want to see? Go to the next slide. I'm going to show third grade math, same numbers, twenty-four point three, thirty-one point seven, and twenty-seven point five. And I'm also going to just say to the board, if you watch the public statements coming out about PARK testing, what we're going to notice is any time that there is any celebration of scores, they're usually one or two points. And so we could use our friends at New Mexico State University and do a simple chi-square analysis and they're going to tell us statistically that's not significant. What they're going to say is these scores are staying stagnant. And so looking at these scores that are staying stagnant, again, I'm going to ask the question, is this really the test that we should be giving? And is this the test that's really measuring student performance based on our own teaching and our own standards? If we go to the next slide. Now I'm going to show you middle school reading proficiency levels. You're going to see nineteen point three, twenty-three point two, and twenty-six point four. Again, very close, similar results. Next slide. I'm going to show you math, fourteen point eight, fifteen point eight, sixteen point nine, very close. Go to the next slide. Now I want to move to AP exams. Now, I believe in AP testing, I believe in AP exams. And these are exams students take in high school and they actually receive college credit for courses. These exams are rigorous and these exams have stayed to the tradition of Cameron's test in AP Government will be the same type of test I took forty years ago when I took AP Government. So the AP College Board has done a wonderful job of measuring what's really in the curriculum. And these tests are quite rigorous. In twelve thirteen, we had a sixty point three, one percent passing rate overall of AP exams. And students are graded on a scale of one to five and you consider to pass the test if you receive a score of three, four, or five. So different colleges and universities will give different credit based on whether the scores are three, four, or a five. If we look at sixteen, seventeen, we're down to thirty-five point two percent. So I wanted to explain to the board and to the public what's happening here. One thing for you to understand is we have increased the number of students in AP courses. This is vital for everyone to understand. Now, my belief is that we need to continue doing that because we are allowing students to have exposure to higher level teaching, higher level order thinking skills. And as we add more students to those courses, then we're going to see some of the scores decrease. I'm also going to give the argument that in order to do well on your twelfth grade AP English test, we have to do a backwards design and go all the way back down to first grade and see what's in the curriculum. And so as we see scores decline, then I have to ask myself, what is it we're doing in elementary and middle school? And I just showed you, we're testing and we're not teaching. And so now, we're beginning to see, in my opinion, a direct correlation between forty days of instruction that normally would be spent teaching students content, that's now being spent teaching you to take a test or actually involved in test-taking. And now the AP exams, which are true indicators of examinations, are beginning to show us a decline. Now, part of that decline is due to the fact that we've increased the number of students, but I think there's also more. And so we're going to begin to review these numbers in greater depth and detail. We'll disaggregate this data as best we can and continue to give the board additional information. Next slide. This is the English Language Arts AP exam, so this is the English exam students take. You're going to see us go from sixty-seven point six-nine percent to thirty-eight percent, but we've increased significantly the number of students in those courses and we need to do even more of that and we hope to do more of that. But also, we have to ask ourselves, are we doing the best we can do? And so to my directors and assistant superintendents in the back, I'm going to challenge you, we need to look at the curricula from first grade all the way up to twelfth grade and we need to ask ourselves, is the curricula aligned so that we are teaching children what we need to teach so that they can be successful in those AP courses? And their answer most likely is going to be, yes, it is. They're going to say, we have less time to teach the material and I'm guessing they're going to come back and tell me, and we've added far more students. These are the AP math exam scores, so we go from fifty-one percent to thirty-five percent and you see the years continuing here. Next slide. Next, we did a survey with teachers. And so I first want to give full credit, this is Amy's work, this isn't my work, but I do want to share with you. So the first thing that Amy did was she asked, okay, where do you work? Are you an elementary teacher, a middle school teacher, or a high school teacher? And I'm going to have to give her kudos. Her response rate's a little better than mine. I got fifty-one percent of administrators, but Amy has three hundred and thirty-six elementary teachers, a hundred and fourteen middle school teachers, and a hundred and sixty-nine high school teachers. So when I want to deliver a message, I'm going to let Amy deliver it because people listen. So this is who responded to her survey. And then the next question is, what do you teach? And so she labels them as a classroom teacher of, she says, regular classroom, I'm going to say just subject classroom teacher, a special education teacher, ancillary teacher, bilingual, elective. So you begin to see who the teachers are. And if we go to the next slide. She said, please mark each of the tests that you are required to administer to your students. So remember before I said to principals, what are you required to do? This is what teachers are telling us. So- So look at teachers. 65.2% are telling us, look at the amount of Park testing they're having to give. So this means 60, boy, my eyes need improvement here. 65% of all teachers in the district are having to give up all those days for Park testing. And this is why you continuously hear me say from this podium, this is why any messages I give to teachers is, stop worrying about the test and go back to teaching. I want good, solid teaching to take place. I want what's best for students. Good teaching will produce good test results. And then we're going to see common formative assessments taking place in almost 50% of our classrooms. That is, again, more time taken away from teaching. And all of us on the board, I think I can say, we're all teachers. So all of us on the board already know, what is the purpose of a test? A test was designed for us to tailor our instruction to see what students gain from the lesson we gave them and then to tailor the instruction for the next unit we're going to give students. So then you have to ask yourself, are we actually using all this data? Are we using it to drive instruction? Are we using it to make decisions? And I'm going to just say to the board that some of these tests, the Park test, we give those in February and March and we get the results back in August. So if you were going to the doctor, of course, I think I would like this. But if I'm asking him to measure my cholesterol level and we get the test done in March and we don't get the results back until August, I'd get all summer to eat high-fat food, right? So no one in any given profession would use test results that are already six months old. And no one would spend the amount of money we're spending. Okay, if we go to the next slide. How often is your instructional time interrupted by the administration of site, district, or state mandated assessments? And so now, this is what is troubling to me. Once a month, once a quarter, once a semester, every two weeks, once a week, more than once a week. Even when I see 6% of teachers tell me more than once a week, that's an issue. And when I see once a month, that tells us that every month, we're focusing on a test somewhere. Okay, next slide. Based on your answer above, how many total days per school year are directly impacted by the administration of these assessments? And so teachers are telling us, 23% of teachers are telling us at least 10 days. 39% are saying 11 to 25 days. So if I add those two together, I get 64% or so of our teachers are saying that they're having to give up at least 10 days. But look at almost 40% telling us they're giving up anywhere between 11 and 25 days. So again, we need to disaggregate this data. We need to look and see what this is. And we need to look at what we're doing. And we need to look at, are we really still continuing to test what is required by federal and state statute? And if we have any ability to cut back on testing, are we actually doing that? Okay. Next question. How many additional days are you required to spend per year preparing students to take tests? So this is not taking the tests, but preparing them. 55.6% of our teachers say they spend an additional 10 days preparing students to take tests. So here you begin to see, principals are telling us two months is being spent. Teachers are telling us even more time. So, I mean, to all of our students, we could start school in October and let you go to Mexico for the first two months and do just as well as we're doing because the results are not improving. They're not showing us anything. And yet we're taking much-needed and valuable time that we should be using to teach you standard, good teaching. Okay, next slide. At the next board meeting, Madam President, members of the board, if the board so desires and permits, I would like to continue my presentation. I'd like to look at the assessment usefulness. How useful are these assessments? How are we using them? We'd like to continue looking at teacher perceptions. We'd like to look very specifically at the use of non-mandated assessments. And we also want to look at teacher-created assessments, which are probably the most important thing we have. And so to my partners at NEA and CSEC, we'll continue to work on our presentation for next month. And if you're agreeable, we'll include these topics. And then we're going to continue throughout the entire fall, updating the board in each work session. Tonight, I'm doing this in a night session only because we didn't have a work session of what we're doing with testing. And then what we're going to do as we go through this is, as you can see, I'm doing a needs assessment with the board and with the public. And then we're going to come up with, what are our recommendations for better teaching in the district as it relates to testing?
Thank you, Dr. Ewing, for that extensive report. Do board members have any questions or concerns before we go on?
Madam President, I just want to make a comment. I want to say that, I want to thank Amy and Dr. Ewing for presenting this and bringing it to the forefront of parents and everyone. And I also want to say that this is not news for teachers. Teachers already knew this information. And so, but I'm very happy to see that it's being brought forth.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Yes. Mr. Harnamio.
Madam President, I just want to make a couple of comments too. First off, I want to thank Dr. Ewing for his views on this as a parent. And I just want to say, I know you mentioned, you know, going back and, you know, first grade, looking at curriculum from first grade through 12th grade. But I don't want you to forget about kindergarten. And it's important to me because there's a lot of things that are happening, that are happening in kindergarten that are not developmentally appropriate. And if I could give you an example, I got a text message today that said, good afternoon, Ray. Sorry to bug you, but I have a question about I station. Should I refuse my daughter, he should put his name, in taking this testing in kindergarten? And so we can't forget about those young children that are coming into the program. So not only do we need to go back to first grade, but let's take it one more step back and even go into the kindergarten curriculum. And then the last question I have, or a question that I have is, how much authority do we have with PED, I guess, in the things that are mandated by us?
Sure. So in the state of New Mexico, local control at the board level is extremely limited. The board basically has the authority to hire and fire the superintendent. You have the authority to set board policy. And then you have the authority to choose legal counsel. That really is the authority of the board. At my level, I have authority over personnel. But testing regulations that are sent down from PED are really what we have to follow. So as we look at testing, you'll notice that I say, anything that's required by the federal or state level, we are required to do. I think as we look to our legislators and as we look to the future, I am a proponent in local control. I am a proponent in allowing the superintendent to make recommendations to the board and the board actually setting that testing policy instead of that policy being driven at the state level. But right now, you don't have much control. And so to our teaching force, we need to make sure they understand, much of the testing we're doing, we're doing because we're required to do so. There are some tests that we're giving that are optional. And now we're beginning that process of educating. And we have to remember, for many years, the teachers have only heard that you have to do this. And the principals have only been trained that this is the only way that you can do something. It's the only way you get promoted. It's the only way you get looked at in the system. So for their careers, they have done nothing but think about giving tests and those test results being used to determine, really, their whole educational career. And so now I am proposing to them and to the teachers that there are other ways to look at things. I would much rather look at a teacher's performance in the classroom teaching than the test results. I can walk in and watch your teaching and then begin to see what the test results are going to look like. And I say that because I realize not all test results are valid. I also am going to say just quickly, I do need to be reminded of kindergarten. And so I say to the staff, we need a kindergarten fix every now and then. If you haven't been to a kindergarten classroom, you need to go look. It is much more academic than when I went to kindergarten, which back then was called Head Start. But to this day, when I go into a kindergarten classroom, I can't fit in any chairs. I can't fit in any desks. So I end up sitting in the floor. And then they all gather around me and the only thing they want to do is look at my beard. And so that's my kindergarten experience. But to our kindergarten teachers, I have to give them a shout out. If you could imagine 25- and 6-year-olds around you all day long, constantly being inquisitive and constantly asking questions. If anyone goes above and beyond every day, I think our kindergarten teachers do. And so thank you for bringing that forward.
I just want to make sure that we, you know, that we're doing things that are developmentally appropriate at that age and making sure that we're, you know, we always say that, you know, we're getting children ready for it. But we also have to have our schools ready for children. And so I want to make sure that that's at the beginning. And that sets the tone. Kindergarten is the foundation. Relationships are the foundation. And then some of these things are happening at that. And how they're going to be learning, it sets the stage for everything above it. So if we're going to go back to first grade, I suggest that we go back one more year.
I completely agree. So I, staff, I'm redirecting you. You heard, kindergarten is important. And I think we should also point out, Mr. Harnamio is now, you're about to be a content expert in, is it Birth to Five? Is that your field?
It is, yes.
So, and you will be the first graduate with a degree in Birth to Five. Yes, yes, excellent.
Madam President.
Yes.
I'd like to see us address these issues when we discuss resolutions a little bit later in the agenda. The local control and the Park testing.
Okay. Sounds good. Yes, Mr. Costa.
Couple of questions. What is the impact on teacher retention being in your experience here?
Sure.
And also, in new teachers coming into the field, choosing this as a career?
Sure. So in the world of education, we have something that we call the 3-4-5 rule. And if you look this up, this is pretty standard data across the nation. The 3-4-5 rule says that within the first three years of teaching, we lose 1/3 of all candidates. And by the fifth year of teaching, we lose 45% of all new teachers. So you can see those first beginning years of teaching are vital. And when you are constantly inundated with tests, and I'm going to use Amy's words, when a test is used to shame a teacher, you begin to see that it's not the most positive or productive thing. I think from my limited time in the school district, I'm not hearing teachers say, I'm leaving now because of testing. I think we do have people retiring. We do have people saying that, I'm ready to have a different change in my life. But I do know that it is greatly impacting their ability to be the best teacher that they can be. And I think we still continue to see the 3-4-5 rule here. And that's something that we have to address. And I think as we look at resolutions, we could pull some data from our own district. Dr. Serrano in his office could do that. And actually let the board know, what is our retention rate? I think that would be important. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Costa. Did you have another question? Okay. All right, so then we'll have Ms. Par Sanchez come on up and then we'll do the NEA report.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Ewing. I'm going to cede my time to Jackie Gardner-Hare in just a moment. But I did want to speak just very briefly about something that's really troubling me. And that is these teacher liaisons that the PED has. And they're communicating directly with teachers. So today, an email was sent to staff and it's Park, 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 Park. So to me, this is, you know, a very different role of the PED where they are, they're leaving the district, they're leaving the superintendent out of the conversation, and they're going directly to the staff. And it's very troubling because while staff are hearing one thing from y'all, they're getting a really strong message directly from the PED that this is what it's about. So the last thing I'll say before I turn it over to Jackie is that my daughter goes to Wesley. She's going to be a junior. My niece goes to Yale. She's, they're both public school-educated students from Las Cruces. And many of the students that they're in school with are private school-educated. And kids that come from private school do not have this disadvantage that we are sending our kids with. Now, thank goodness that these girls are both able to compete. But we are, we're hurting our students. And I think you all know it, so.
And Madam President, members of the board, I will just address one comment. I have had conversations with Secretary-designate Woskowsky and stated that I have a procedure here. We have a chain of command as we communicate. I would never communicate with a teacher without going through the principal first. Even within this building, we have established a chain of command. Staff don't write to me directly before they go through their own supervisors. And so I have asked him to please address with the PED staff that it's embarrassing when teachers are receiving instructions that I have not been copied on or have no inclination of what the email is about. This new secretary-designate seems to be a little more open to listening to these conversations. And so we will see where that goes. And then in my next meeting with the secretary, with the superintendents from across the state, I will voice my concern again.
Okay, thank you.
I'll be sharing a letter that was actually put together by Amy Simpson in collaboration with NEA Las Cruces. So, Dear President Flores, members of the board, hey, Cameron. It's always good to see you. I got to work with him in middle school, so I'm so proud of him. And Dr. Ewing. Thank you for this initial effort to commence a testing audit from our request last May. And thank you for your commitment to address the increase of standardized testing and for recognizing that too much focus on standardized testing takes up valuable time spent on learning. We believe that we need to focus on what helps students the most. Great schools give students time for one-to-one attention and instruction, inspire natural curiosity and a desire to learn. This means teaching critical thinking skills and problem-solving skills as well as creativity through a well-rounded education that includes writing, math, science, history, arts, and physical education. Of all the things we teach our kids, the most important is love of learning, which no bubble test can measure. We are grateful that the Las Cruces Public School Board and Superintendent Ewing have also articulated similar views about testing. Tonight's PowerPoint presentation is a step in the right direction, but there is much more territory to cover. We know that excessive, high-stakes standardized testing will not be reduced simply because we believe it should be. It will take vigilance and tenacity. It will take all stakeholders coming to the table and honestly asking if the results of this particular assessment are really worth reducing reduced student learning time. We need to ask if this or that assessment is worth the money that we spend on it. We think a thorough audit will help answer these questions and more. But we also want to warn against having an audit take so much time that we subject students to another year of excessive testing. To that end, we commend this district for starting the process and we encourage it to move as quickly as possible to identify and eliminate unnecessary testing. NEA Las Cruces continues to be committed to working collaboratively with the district to develop an instrument to collect feedback from educators, not just classroom teachers, but to include other community members. To that end, we have completed a testing survey, a follow-up from the one we did in 2014. And we've shared the results with the district. Additionally, NEA Las Cruces is prepared to provide input into educator training, preparation, and other issues related to audit results, especially regarding helping educators develop authentic assessments to replace the standardized tests. We look forward to working together to improve our assessments and limit the amount of time spent on them so that educators have more time to teach and students have more time to learn. We also look forward to determining how our limited resources can best be spent for our students and our children. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Thank you.
I told you, if Amy were here, that she would have spoken better than I did. We need to save that letter for sure. Glenn, would you give Amy our thanks for tonight?
Mr. Herman.
Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Ewing. This past weekend, hate-filled bigots descended on Charlottesville in an attempt to evoke fear and terror. In their wake, three were dead and 19 more were injured and a community left traumatized. The weapons they used to incite, torches, hateful slurs, and threats. There has been a flurry of recent news about alleged hate and harassment. Racial hatred, bias, and white supremacy were on full display in Charlottesville, Virginia this weekend. And there are nine more alt-right rallies scheduled for this weekend. NEA stands with members of the Charlottesville community and we offer our deepest condolences to the families of those who lost... to the families of those who lost their lives on Saturday. Educators bear the wounds collectively. Heather Hires' mother, Susan Hoy, formerly taught in the public schools and was a member of the Green County Education Association. Karen Cullen, wife of Lieutenant J. Cullen, is an elementary teacher and a member of the Chesterfield Education Association. We mourn with them and their families. Many Americans are feeling uncertainty and anxiety as we witness the recent eruption of divisive rhetoric and hateful deeds. Many Americans are wondering if they are in danger simply because of the color of their skin, their sexual orientation, or where they pray. I know that some are wondering whether the progress we have made at such great cost and over so many years is in danger of sliding backwards. As we continue to ask for a country where all people are are truly treated equally, we are met with prejudice, bigotry, and condemnation. Americans heard the promises set forth in the Declaration of Independence and the Constitution. They demanded that it be fulfilled. Women who endured ridicule and condescension for seeking the ballot, black soldiers who defended freedom overseas only to return home to a nation that wouldn't let them vote. And that sometimes repaid their service with angry violence, marchers who braved police dogs at Birmingham, and the sting of cattle prods at Selma, LGBTQ individuals who fought for their civil rights at the Stonewall Inn. Through the courage and determination of these and countless others who have gone before us, we have slowly built a society that more fully reflects our founding creed of liberty and justice for all. That does not mean our work is finished. As you all are aware, the opposite is true. We all know this work is never finished. Will this work be hard? It has always been hard. Will there be challenges ahead? We have always known that the price of freedom is constant vigilance. Will we persevere? We always do. Our centuries-long protect of creating a better country was not the product of fate or destiny. It was the result of countless individuals making the choice to stand up, to demand recognition, to refuse to rest until they knew that their children were inheriting a nation that was more tolerant, more inclusive, and more equal. It's good to find courage and inspiration in the leaders who came before us. Freedom and equality are earned and fought for in every single generation. It's our turn now. This is our moment. This is our time to demand what's right. We must use our collective power and with righteous indignation, demand justice and equality for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hartman, for that very profound statement, much needed in this current scene. Alda?
Uh yes, Madam President, if I may, I'm I'm just noticing as I look at the audience, so I'm gonna talk to Tina in the back. Uh I'm seeing an assistant superintendent and a director without a table and chair. So I apologize, we certainly wanna treat you all well. Um can we look at the configuration and Bobby, I need more space, I need a table and chair. We wanna treat all our employees well. So if we can work on that for the next meeting, and I apologize to both of you, I I was an oversight on my part, so I apologize.
Okay, and we now go to student advisory report.
Well, Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Superintendent, thank you. I wanna get started on, I wasn't expecting, I wanted to get started on uh on staffing the Student Advisory Council first, but I wasn't expecting this presentation that you had on standardized testing. And it really did catch my ear because I look back at personally my time in student advocacy and student involvement, and I trace it back to my middle school years when I got in trouble for uh passing out opt-out forms in the spring. And and with that, that the the little bit of conflict there, from then on, I was hooked. So obviously, it's something that I'm very passionate about. And in discussions with Max and some of the returners of the Student Advisory Council, I they asked me what my vision was, what my main agenda, my main agenda, I'm sorry, was for this year with the Student Advisory Council. And I said, I wanna take Dr. Ewing's vision, and really, it's a shared vision about teaching and shutting your door and doing what you know you do best, and not worrying about any outside distractions when it comes to testing, the mandated tests that we all can't stand, and focusing on what you do best. Um so I know Mr. Frank will talk about it in a minute. You did bring up when it comes time to discuss board resolutions. Last year, we took up a board resolution, and we got into a dogfight in front of the Senate Rules Committee over it, and we won. And this time, if we can come up with a resolution that the Student Advisory Council can agree on completely regarding testing and our shared vision of shutting your door and not worrying about the high-stakes standardized testing that we all have to suffer through, and teaching and students' learning, that would be something that personally, and I think I can speak on behalf of the kids that we have in the Student Advisory Council, would be ready to go up for a fight with in January of 2018.
Good plan.
Excellent, and I had nothing, I have not said a word to him. I'm just, no. We had no conversation. Excellent, Cameron.
And you know, with uh with your generous donation of your time and with your funds that you receive from teaching at Don Yana Community College, hopefully, we will definitely be able to secure a trip to Santa Fe this session. But right now, I I was talking to Mike Mylum, who's our policy advisor. It's gonna take a lot of research, it's gonna take a lot of time defining terms, so that way we go up there fully loaded. And we go up there and those senators who are tied to the special interest groups, that way we can ensure that they don't have anything on us. And to me, personally, it's not a Democrat thing, it's not a Republican thing, it's a common sense thing that standardized testing, high-stakes standardized testing needs to shrink. It needs, it doesn't need to go away completely. Obviously, we need some form of evaluation, but the way we have it now and the way it targets our southern New Mexico community, my southern New Mexico community, is inexcusable. So that's why I want it to be a part of our agenda for the Student Advisory Council this year. As for the Student Advisory Council, Mike Mylum, Mike and I have been contacting students who were, whose names were generously provided to us by our high school principals, and we've been setting up interviews for them. Dr. Ewing asked that the students be interviewed, which I think is a great idea. I wanna get a good read on these people before we ask them to be a part of a large student advocacy group. So we do have six or seven interviews scheduled uh within the next week. I know we have five of those on Friday here. So hopefully, with that, we will continue to engage students from every single one of our high school campuses, uh right now, tenth through twelfth grades. And if any freshmen come along that are interested, obviously, we would take them too. I wanna look for the next kid who's a little ticked off about something and wants to be articulate in their response to it. So that's where we are with that. Our first meeting is gonna be September nineteenth in the Superintendent Conference Room prior to the regular board meeting. And I hope to come to the board meeting with a with a report on a shared vision, or at least who we are as a Student Advisory Council. I look forward to finding that identity for us. And then something that Max and I have discussed, while I do enjoy it and I do enjoy learning about parliamentary procedure and how to vote on policies and things like that, I wanna give more kids the opportunity to be in this chair this year. Only if they want to. If they don't want it, if they want it for a resume builder, then they don't need to be a part of this. But that is another goal that we're looking forward to in the Student Advisory Council this year. With that, Madam President, I'll take any questions that the board may have.
Well, Cameron, I just wanna compliment you on your foresight, and I don't know, it just, what you say is so much more meaningful, and I don't know why people have resisted student input for so long. I just can't believe that, you know, you're, what you're saying is more meaningful to me than anything else. Of course, Dr. Ewing, you're right in there.
No, I agree. I'm with you.
But I'm I'm just, your your leadership is incredible. So anything we can do to help, the board can do to help you, let us know.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. And I look forward to working together on this, looking at resolutions.
And we did have have a resolution last time, reduce high-stake testing. Um and I like the idea of less testing, more local control, perhaps. So we'll talk about that at the time. And do any other board members have comments for?
I do not.
Cameron? Okay.
Chairman?
Yes.
I'm just very pleased with the type of message that you're putting out to the community and to the to the teachers. I think knowing that you have, you empathize with their with their cause and that, you know, we we sit with them, we're, you know, in unison, and hopefully, we can make some change and make teaching, you know, what it's all about instead of what what people are trying to do now.
Yes, sir. That's absolutely right. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Castro. Um anyone else? Okay.
Madam President, if I could, I just wanna remind the board um that we had a wonderful faculty advisor with the student advisors last year, and Ms. Hammond is enjoying time. Help me, is it Miss Montana? She's in Montana. But for this upcoming year, um I want to announce um with the board's blessing that the student advisors have had conversations, and so Ms. Martinez, our chief academic officer, will be working with them. She's not here tonight. Uh we wanna certainly send her our best wishes. She's dealing with a family issue, so if you could think good thoughts for her. And then we're gonna have Mr. Greenberg from Ms. Par Sanchez's office work with them as well. And so we'll give you, I think she would let me get by with saying this, we're gonna give you an experienced person, and we're gonna give you a young, energetic person to both, give you both spectrums of what it's like with her thirty-nine years in education and Mr. Greenberg coming into education.
Okay, thank you. And let's, let us know how that works.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Okay, uh we move on now to human resources, and Dr. Serrano.
Hello, Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Superintendent. I'm here to present the employee report for June and July. Since the last board meeting, we've been very busy in HR. We have had a hundred and seventeen certified hires, certified thirty-six resignations and eleven retirements. As far as classified, we've hired seventy-one new employees. We've had sixteen resignations and one retirement. I also wanted to uh thank CSEC NEA for their great support in a very successful, uh as part of the new onboarding, uh the new employee orientation was very successful. At Oñate High School, we had about a hundred and fifty new employees, uh full-blown, all-day orientation, uh July thirty-first. With that, I I stand for questions at this time.
Okay, uh we've all seen the report. Anyone have any questions or comments for Dr. Serrano?
No questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Madam President, if I may, just to Dr. Serrano, and I see Edwanda in the audience from HR, they've done an outstanding job. We had most positions filled by the beginning of June. We posted openings in April and allowed principals to begin hiring in May so we could hire graduates before anyone else. And none of that would have been possible without Dr. Serrano's leadership and without Edwanda and that great workforce that you have in HR. So I want to say thank you very much to the entire HR team and to Dr. Serrano for his leadership.
Okay, so we go on to um instruction, and Erwin is not here.
Yes, ma'am. So Madam President, I'm gonna call on Dr. Wendy Miller Tomlinson, our Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning.
Good afternoon, Madam President, members of the board. Mr. Superintendent, I am here to present a proposed change to the high school graduation schedule for the class of two thousand and eighteen. If you remember back a couple of months ago, we all spent a lot of time together over many evenings. So this proposal is to still spend a lot of time together celebrating with our students over two evenings or or two days rather than four or six days. So the proposed change is to conduct the commencement ceremonies on Friday, May eighteenth, having three ceremonies on that day, and the next day, Saturday, May nineteenth. Both days, the ceremonies would be at nine, one-thirty, and six, like like we had this year for our Saturday ceremonies. All of the um ceremonies would be at the Pan Am Center at NMSU, which um this year, or the past few years, Arrowhead Park has been at the Convention Center, and they have outgrown that venue, especially with the addition of the Medical Academy who will graduate their first class this coming May. So with that, I will stand for any questions that you have.
And board members, do we have questions on this new schedule?
We like it, don't we? Thank you, Ms. Bellman, for.
It just makes sense.
We're gonna need extra vitamins that day, so. Okay, so then, have we had, has has it been um open to the public for comments at all?
We ran it by the high school principals in the spring. We talked about after um graduation toward the end of school, we talked about the proposed change, um and everyone seemed to like it. I think it makes sense for families who can, you know, be in town over a weekend instead of graduating on a Tuesday night, which is untenable at times.
And Madam President, this information has been posted in our five-hundred-plus-page packet that our staff worked so well to put together. So the public, if they looked at tonight's agenda, would have had from, help me out, does that go up on Friday? So that's been up since Friday morning, if anyone wanted to look. And I think we see Cameron sitting here, so students, I don't think are gonna complain at all.
You know, I don't know if the students are aware of this change. Uh Dr. Tomlinson, Madam President, if I may, I do have one question. Is is this change gonna be, yield any more savings to the district?
So that's a great question, Madam President, Cameron. Um we, the renting the Pan Am is expensive, and it it just, it just is for for many reasons. So this year, between the five ceremonies that we had at the Pan Am Center and the one ceremony that we had at the Convention Center, costs around eighty-five thousand dollars. This change will probably save us in the neighborhood of six or seven thousand dollars by having all the ceremonies. It's cheaper to rent the Pan Am and have three ceremonies on one day rather than over several days. So there will be a little bit of a cost savings doing it this way.
Thank you, thank you. And that's information that I can take back to our seniors when they complain about having to get up early to walk.
So um so the other, the good thing for you, Cameron, is because Centennial's um graduation ceremony is at nine o'clock in the morning, there would be no school at Centennial on that Friday, so.
I'm not gonna complain about it.
I don't think we'll have complaints about that one.
If you need to sell it, you know, you can always put that in your pocket.
So Centennial will have Friday off to attend the cer, and we want students to come to the ceremony.
Absolutely.
And one reason we're using Pan Am Center, I think we're proud to say, help me, Dr. Miller Tomlinson, we don't give out tickets, the the building is open, is that correct?
That's correct.
That's unheard of in this day and time. Most students around the nation graduating have six, seven graduation tickets.
That's true.
And so for us to say the center is open and you can invite as many family members as you wish, that that's remarkable. It's great.
Okay, so if we don't have any more questions or comments, I will entertain a motion to approve the amended high school graduation schedule.
I should move?
Second.
Mr. Castro and Mr. Frank, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so it passes. We have a new schedule for graduate.
Thank you very much.
And so can I direct staff that we get this on the website tomorrow? Can we also send an email to all high school principals, assistant principals? And then can we also send an email to all of our teachers to let them know? Cameron, if you can think of, we're gonna notify principals, APs, we're gonna notify the teachers, we're gonna post this on the web, and then I think our high school principals will take over from there.
Yes, sir.
You can think of something else, let us know.
Okay, yes, sir.
And Dr. Ewing, could we put a little post in the newspaper or?
Yes, ma'am. So Ms. Galvont, can, perhaps the media wants to do a story on this and we could?
We had planned to reprint the calendars and give every student a new calendar.
Oh, okay, yes, all right, excellent.
Madam President, um also, it would be, I think, a good idea to go ahead and include the savings that we're.
Sure, okay.
We're doing. We're doing it.
So Dr. Miller Tomlinson, if you can get us as close as you can to what that savings is, then we can incorporate that in our press release.
Okay. Very good. We move on to finance, and Ms. Valdez.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Superintendent. In your packet this evening is a request for an adoption of a resolution notice to sell general obligation bonds in the amount of $15,000. This is the final installment of the sales of the $65 million that was approved in 2014, in the 2014 bond election. This evening, I have Ms. Ives with Cuddy and McCarthy, as well as Regina Gysena from RBC Capital Markets, and they would like to present information with regard to the financial status as well as the resolutions.
And Madam President, if I may, Crystal, correct me, but I think we're selling $15 million in bonds, is that correct?
Did I not say $15 million?
You said $15,000, so...
$15,000 would not go very far.
I have to say...
Not that $15 million goes far enough.
She's doing to the board what she does to me. She drops all the zeros off my request.
I apologize. Hopefully, the rest will go better.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. In front of you is a brief packet. I'm going to go over, and then I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Ives to go over the documents. So on page two is your current finance plan. We are issuing $15 million in new money. That's the last, fourth installment of your 2013 authorization. Currently, district's SB 9 authorization is good through 2022. Your HB 33 authorization is good through 2020. In 2018, the district will be going back to voters to authorize up to $50 million new money bond issue. If you turn on page three, you can see the history of your assessed valuation. We received most recent preliminary numbers for 2017. The district has seen about 2.8% growth in the preliminary assessed value. That's consistent with what we've been projecting in structuring your finance plan, and it's consistent with your average five-year and 10-year annual growth rates. On page four is your bonding capacity. After the issuance of Series 2017A bonds, the district will be bonded 60% to capacity. So there is still about 40% remaining. So we don't have any issues in terms of capacity. On page five is the history of tax rate. Actually, this week, we've been working with Department of Finance Administration and PED to set the tax rate for tax year 2017. It will remain at about $44.06, so no increase in tax rate with the issuance of Series 2017 bonds, and that rate is subject to approval. So hopefully, we'll receive the final numbers in the next few weeks. Page six, just history of your major taxpayers. And on page seven, today you will also approve a resolution authorizing sale of Series 2017B refunding bonds. They will be refunding your currently outstanding Series 2009 bonds, which are callable on August 1st, 2019. So it will be an advance refunding. Based on market rates from end of July, the present value savings would be approximately $450,000. On an annual cash flow basis, you could see that it would range from $37,000 to $40,000 to the district in savings, which would be around 4.3%. These rates are conservative. They do include additional 25-basis-point buffer in case the rates are to move between now and the time the district actually will be selling bonds in September timeframe. If the rates are, in fact, as where they are today, we are expecting to be savings greater on present value basis. On page eight is a time schedule for your bond sale. We are expecting to sell the bonds and go out to the investors around September 19th or earlier, depending on the market conditions, and the bonds will be closing and the funds will be available to the district around October 24th. There's also your current finance plan in the back and some market information. With that, I'm going to open up for any questions you might have regarding that.
Okay, board members, do we have any questions on this?
A lot of numbers.
I can't see it either.
Well, if you have trouble sleeping.
Yeah, yes.
Madam President, if we need, we can certainly work with staff to increase the font size and place copies in. So Tina, can you work with us tomorrow?
Yes.
We want to reprint some of these pages. Let's go on much larger-sized paper the way you print for me, and then if you can increase the font size the way you do for me, and then let's place those in the board members' boxes in my office. So I'll get you an updated copy. Cameron, I'm guessing you're the only one up here who can read this, right? Hardly.
Well, thank you for your presentation. Most of it I can read. It's just those last three pages that I can't see. So, thank you very much. I don't think we have any questions at this time. With that, I'm going to pass along to Ms. Ives.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming.
Good evening, Madam President, board members. Dr. Ewing, I'm here today because I wanted to talk to you a little bit about a different, difference in the resolution that you've got before you tonight. During this last legislative session, the legislature finally passed legislation that has been proposed for a number of years. The legislation was intended to make boards' lives easier. As you know, when, I know you're experienced with these bond sales that we've done over the number, the last number of years, and you know that we've had to continually come back to the board, get lots of signatures before we could sell the bonds. Well, as I said, this new legislation is designed to make everybody's life a lot easier. What it does is, there was a new provision in the law, of the securities provisions of the law, that basically says that boards are allowed to designate a pricing officer. And when you designate a pricing officer, the board has to give that pricing officer certain parameters so that this pricing officer can then work with the financial advisor and with your bond counsel to figure out the best terms for the bonds. And as you know, the market is always fluctuating, and it seems to be doing more so these days. But in any event, the idea behind it again is that we would be working with one person who the board designates, again, with certain, within certain parameters that the board also designates, and then we would be able to decide at what time the best rates can be decided. So the difference in the resolution that you've got before you tonight is that it does actually designate a pricing officer. And the person that is designated as a pricing officer is, of course, the chief financial officer, who, of course, knows these numbers, who is used to working with financial advisors and with bond counsel. And so that's the most important difference right there with this resolution. I also want to point out that it, on pages five and six of the resolution, are the different parameters that you are placing on your financial officer. And those are things like the aggregate original principal amount, which, of course, is $15 million. We have the final maturity, which is not to exceed August 1st of 2033. We've got the maximum interest rate, which is 5% per annum, the true interest cost, which should not exceed 5%. There's also the price to be paid for the bonds, shall not be less than five, I'm sorry, 95% of the aggregate original principal amount. And, very importantly, the delegation that you are making this evening, designating your chief financial officer as the pricing officer, would expire on December 13th, 2017. And that also is pursuant to law. Under the new law, the pricing officer can only have that delegation of authority for four months. And so basically, we've met all of the parameters. These numbers, I need to say, were developed in conjunction with your financial advisor, with Ms. Gysena.
Valdez.
Exactly, and with Ms. Valdez. And so that's really the important thing. I also want to mention that the fact that you are delegating this authority and responsibility to your chief financial advisor does not mean that the board is giving up or usurping any of its other responsibilities. The board is obviously ultimately responsible for this, but again, by setting these parameters, they're reasonable parameters, they come upon the advice of your bond counsel as well as your financial advisor. So that should hopefully allow you to sleep better at night, because this is a significant amount of money. So I just wanted to mention that to you, and if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
I just need to find it in this packet. I haven't found...
It wouldn't be in the packet that, the financial packet.
It's not here.
It should be in the board resolution.
And Madam President, I apologize, we probably didn't properly introduce. So tonight, we have more than one legal counsel representing myself and the board. So we have Ms. Gallegos, who stays with me normally, but with bond sales, this is a very specific item, as you can see, looking at all of these sheets. And so Ms. Ives is with the Cuddy Law Firm, and she is also legal counsel, approved by the board, and she is here tonight as the board's legal counsel. So the advice she's giving us, help me with this, but I'm going to say, you are giving the board legal advice as our legal counselor, and we just have her at the podium instead of here beside Ms. Gallegos. So tonight, we have two lawyers instead of one, and that always makes me even happier. So, thank you.
But you noticed we dressed alike. I think that's important. I think that's going to be hard to tell us apart.
Thank you for, and you came from Albuquerque.
From Santa Fe.
Santa Fe. So we're having the lawyers do some driving today, but I do appreciate you coming, and I also want to say thank you for taking on this enormous assignment. You come very highly recommended. Staff here have worked with you before, and I will say to the board, it's an outstanding job what she has done for us, and I appreciate you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Ewing. I appreciate that very much. And I would just add, and I apologize for not having introduced myself in that way...
No, we should have done it. I apologize.
Well, no, I do too. But I do want to make clear that we do represent the board. We are not the financial advisor's attorney or anybody else's attorney. We're here for the board, and that's the advice that we are giving.
Madam President?
Yes.
Are we going to take action?
Yes, we're going to go ahead and make two votes right now.
Okay. I just didn't see the resolution. I don't...
It, oh...
I don't see the...
It's right here. It was online.
Online in the packet. Okay. That's, okay.
And we can certainly pull that resolution up.
It's, they just...
Bill, can you pull the resolution for us, please?
Yeah.
It's up.
Yeah, right there.
I was looking for it in my packet there. There we go.
This is it, right here.
Thank you, Bill.
Yes, so that's where the parameters are. Any other questions before we take action? We're ready? Okay. Then I will entertain a motion to adopt the resolution of notice of sale for general obligation bonds.
I'll move that.
Okay, so we have a first for Mr. Frank and a second for Mr. Castro. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so the adoption passes. And then we move on to, this one will require a roll-call vote. I will entertain a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the sale of general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2017B. And, let's see, I need a motion?
I so move.
Okay, Mr. Castro first, and I'll take yours as a second, Mr. Hara Mio. And then, Mr. Hara Mio, can you do a roll-call vote on this?
Ms. Dolman?
Yes.
Mr. Castro?
Yes.
I vote yes. Vice President Frank?
Yes.
President Flores?
Yes. So it now passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you to both of you. And Ms. Ives, thank you for your explanations. We appreciate it, and hopefully, everything goes well here.
Thank you. Safe driving, and thank you so much for coming tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Madam President, members of...
Excuse me one moment.
Oh, excuse me.
Ed, can we have security in the parking lot as our attorneys leave this evening, please?
Excuse me. Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Superintendent, the RFP number 16-17-05P, Professional Interpreter Translation Services. This is a solicitation for competitive proposal for services to assist and support special education programs and district-wide needs. The review committee included three employees who work with the providers of these services as well as the students requiring the services. Recommendation is requested to award vendor Southwest interpreting. And I stand for questions.
Does anyone have questions on this?
I do not.
Okay. All right. And how often do we do this, this, for how many years is it? Is it just for one year?
It's just for one year. Yes, ma'am.
All right. If nobody has any questions or comments, I will entertain a motion to approve the request for proposal 1617-05P, Professional Interpreter Translation Services, and we need a roll-call vote. So I need a motion?
So move.
Ms. Dolman and Mr. Castro seconded it, and Mr. Hara Mio.
Ms. Dolman?
Yes.
Mr. Castro?
Yes.
I vote yes. Vice President Frank?
Yes.
And President Flores?
Yes, so it passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Los Cruces Public School Fourth Quarter Report. This report is for business that, for the year ending June 30th, 2017. Our report includes adjustments made to comply with our cash basis accounting method, and our operational cash balance is $11,852,000. We have not completed our audit, which, we will have an audited cash balance either late November or December of 2017. This is a report that is submitted to the Public Education Department on a quarterly basis, and I stand for questions on that.
Board members, no questions, comments? Okay, we move on.
The next item is the June financial report. This is a snapshot of our activity on the first business day in July. It's prior to any bank reconciliations and necessary entries that are made for that month.
We've all seen it in our packet, no questions? Okay.
Additionally, we have the July financial report. It is a snapshot as of the first business day in August, before adjusting interests have been made.
And I think we...
No questions.
We move on.
Okay, thank you. Lastly, the June Financial Advisory Committee meeting minutes are presented, and our Finance Advisory Committee met on June 15th, prior to the June board meeting. Mr. Frank and Mr. Castro are two board members who are on this committee, and so I will defer to them for any input that you might have regarding the meeting at that time or in general or that specific meeting.
I have no comment about the minutes of that meeting.
Thank you.
They seem totally in order.
Right.
Mr. Castro, the same? Okay, so we're good?
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Valdez.
Thank you very much. Good job.
And we go on to Mr. Hawkes for operations.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, and Mr. Superintendent. So first item of business I have in front of you is a utility easement for Mayfield High School. We began construction on the new kitchen, or the kitchen remodel, I guess, over there, and as we got into some of the work, we, it was discovered that we need a, we need to move a power line, a high-voltage power line. It won't really change anything up, and we'll kind of work around that, but they needed a temporary easement to move that utility to make that project possible. So with that, I stand for questions.
And Madam President, I'm going to remind the board, previously, these were being signed off without board approval, and so I have requested that we take each and every one of these in front of the board, since the board is responsible for the land-end buildings, and we're going to ask for the board's approval as we do each and all. and we're gonna ask for the board's approval as we do each and all of these.
Okay. And thank you, Dr. Ewing, for that. Does anybody have any questions? And you said this was temporary.
Yes, ma'am. So it's temporary to relocate that, no, the relocation will be permanent, but the easement is just temporary to get in there and do that.
All right, well, if no one has any questions or comments, I will entertain a motion to approve the Mayfield High School utility easement.
So move.
I second.
Ms. Dahman first, and Mr. Jaramillo second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so that passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And so moving on to my next item, so normally, if it was a work session, I would present this report at a work session, but school started yesterday, so I wanted to update you on a few things. And as I reflect back, it was a year, about a year ago today that me and Ms. Valdez started, and school started, and so transportation was quite interesting back then, and it was quite green. So not that I know everything by all means at this point, but we've actually had a really smooth start to the year. Just to let you know, so we had folks out on Sunday night until midnight in some schools, so two and a half plus inches of rain coming in from the north, and as Mr. Bobby Stout says, when it comes from the north, it's a phenomenon that comes in, and I mean, for some reason, that creeps into buildings, that creeps in through windows, and so we had, we had crews on staff till about a little bit after midnight, prepping, prepping schools, and I was out and about at 6:00 Monday morning. Schools looked absolutely phenomenal. I mean, we had custodians there, our PPD crew, Mr. Stout, Mr. Dynick. It was just amazing what people did to have classrooms ready for kids. You wouldn't, walking in, you would, you would have never known that there was six inches of water in classrooms on Sunday nights. So kudos to our team for, for making it happen for kids, as always. We even had roads washed out over there by Columbia and Vista, and so we had people out there working diligently, and buses ran smoothly. There were a couple of rough spots, but life was well for kids. So thank you for all our operations team and all their hard work. So another big project is Cruces High. I was holding my breath as, as we were getting closer. We had met, we've met all summer, and we met up till, actually till Sunday, working on those projects. But if you get a chance, I was speaking with Senora Florida today. We'd like to take you out there and have a tour. If you haven't seen it, it looks phenomenal, even in the construction. So will be completed hopefully ahead of schedule, but it looks great. So the classrooms we're building for students out there, it was very well needed and well deserved, so. Leadership Division, so almost our entire school leadership team met August 2nd for a Leadership Academy, the First Annual Leadership Academy, and we had several district folks as well. So this is the first part of an ongoing leadership development for our entire district leadership to build capacity, and this is just one facet. So we're also gonna be looking at teacher leaders, aspiring administrators, but it was just absolutely phenomenal to see all our leaders get together, and the synergy that was there, I mean, it was, it was absolutely incredible. So we're super excited about that. Community Schools, so we had a community school open house, and we had about three, three to 400 families attend this. Once again, it was kind of, it's kind of an annual event, so we had free haircuts, they had several businesses, school supplies, backpacks, just a really, really exciting evening for students and staff. So our community schools, Mary Par Sanchez, our partners in NEA, David Greenberg, I mean, they did a great job along with the school, prepping for students, so really excited about that. And my last topic, transportation. So as of Monday, we had no overcrowding on buses. Today, we had an overcrowding issue, one overcrowding issue at Centennial. Forty-three students registered to ride a bus, and we had 20-plus more students that wanted to ride that bus that weren't registered, but I was, I've been assured that that will be corrected for tomorrow, so we got that taken care of. Today was Kinder First Day, so we had a few incidents. There were a few students that were placed on the wrong bus, but we, everybody got home at the end of the day, yesterday and today, every kid accounted for. We had a couple of little mishaps, but everybody was safe, and we took care of those, and we've, we're actually drilling down to the root cause to make sure that doesn't happen again in the future. But kudos to our bus company, our bus drivers, all of our teachers and staff. Yay, it was a great couple of days for that. Just a reminder, we had some calls about, and I just want to make you all aware of Hornada. So there was, there was a misconception out there that we changed some bus routes that had to do with money. So what happened was, is we had a couple of extra bus routes that were out there, and the rule, PED, state statute, which is of course then administered through PED and through the district. So for elementary students, we bus students that are outside of a mile. For middle school, it's a mile and a half, and high school, it's two miles. So if they're, in the past, if there was room on buses that were coming through, we would adjust bus stops and be able to pick students up on the way. So with, last year, we did, we did an entire, I don't want to say redistricting, it was rerouting, is what we did. And so this year, it was fairly smooth because we had the same routes in place, but we did, there were, we looked at ridership, and so we did move some buses around to alleviate some overcrowding. So it wasn't a change in rules on our part, or change in any sort of statute, it was just that we moved some buses for ridership. So what that hap, what happened there was, there were some students that were living within a mile range of Hornada that, that aren't getting, that aren't routed to be bused. So we came up with a really cool solution, and kudos to Sean Barham and Todd Gregory. So they're working with safe, safe routes to school to do a walking school bus. So we're looking at, working with them to actually get a person to come in and actually walk the, the, closer than a mile students, and picks, pick students up along the way and kind of create a healthy alternative to riding a bus, but also a safe alternative there. So we are listening to every concern that parents have out there with busing, and we're addressing those one by one as they go by. STS, our bus provider, they, they installed a new phone system, and working very well, but we've had a couple of hiccups on, as far as getting calls and calls getting routed, but our team has come together, all of our ops team, so we're sending support staff to answer phones and to help parents, and I, we will, we will get every issue taken care of in a timely manner. So just kudos to our entire operational team and our district as well, our leadership team. It was a great, great start. Yesterday, we met with all of our central office team who went out to schools, and I just gotta tell you, from last year to this year, it was just, it was exciting to hear all the really cool things, and there were a few things, and we had a leak here and there that, that we got on, but other than that, it was, it's been a super successful start for our school year. So kudos to everybody and all their hard work, and kids are back, so we're excited. So with that, I stand for questions, and please feel free, if you have any questions or anything, thank you for forwarding emails that constituents are sending to you, so we can get on those and get that taken care of.
Okay, let's see, I think we might have questions and comments. Do you want to start, Mr. Castro?
I don't know.
Okay, Mr. Jaramillo.
Madam President. I had a couple of things that I wanted to discuss, and you addressed all of them. I'm gonna scratch them off my list here, a few of them. But one thing I do want to, because Hornada is, is in my district, and, and I live close to that, is there any account taken for where that school is? Because it seems that some schools are a little bit easier to access through walking. I can tell you that, you know, some of the constituents that I, that have contacted me, although they're right under a mile long, I'm not too sure I would let my kindergarten or first grade walk down Elks on a Monday morning when everyone's coming to school. So safety, obviously, is important to me. I know that you've addressed this, but is there any consideration to make adjustments for schools that are, that are on roads similar to Elks? I mean, Elks is now a very busy, Hornada is the only way you can get to that school that's funded, is through those, those doors, so that concerns me a little bit as well.
So, absolutely, so hazardous route to school, so there are considerations within, like, let's say, a mile, that you look at hazardous route, and it has to do with speed limit, it has to do with sidewalks, it has to do with several different, different components. So I actually looked at some of those, and it's really, Sean Barham and Todd Gregory talked about today, and actually drove some of the routes that people have actually talked about and looked at, and so they don't really fall within that.
Absolutely.
But on the flip side of that, let me tell you kind of how that works. So if we identify an area, and I'll, I'll use Mesa Middle School as an example, being out there for a few years, like, we don't have sidewalks, so, and the road is narrow, and it, I mean, you're, you're in the weeds once you're off, you're actually off the road. So some of those considerations, like, as you're looking at bus routes coming in, like, how can we pick up students along the way, and that's always an option, but even on the hazardous routes, this is really interesting, that, that state statute allows us to create those bus routes and pick up those students, as lo, and as long as it falls within the allotment, are, that they've already given us for transportation. So in other words, it's unfunded, which has nothing to do with safety of students and us making sure kids are safe, but it was really interesting to me, and kind of on a side note, it's, we, it's right under $40,000 to add a new bus and a new bus route per year. So we're absolutely looking at those routes, though, so we're gonna be contacting those parents, and then we're gonna, we're gonna put up, meet with the principal and kind of, and some of these parents, and talk about, like, this walking school bus idea, and see if that's an option. If not, we're looking at numbers for that, too.
I know that, like, in, in, you know, they have the walking Wednesdays, they meet there at the State Farm Agency, and they walk by my house right there in the morning, so I get to see them. But I, I think that, and it's, it sounds like you alluded to something like that more on a daily basis, to help those families that might be within, just within that, that area. It sounds like that's what's, what's happening.
Similar concept, it'd just be somebody walking with them every day, and kind, like, kind of how I see it in, in simple terms, in my simple terms, is we'd start, you know, Point A, and we'd pick up some students, and as you go along, you're picking up students, and we're kind of all walking together, but kind of still have that adult supervision. So, so we're gonna look at that as an option and put that out to parents, and we also will look at the, the busing option as well. If there's room, we're absolutely happy to do it. You know, if there's, if, and ridership, right now, it's kind of like the first day of school, so we're looking at ridership, we're looking at routes. If we notice that a bus has 20 students and it's capable of transporting like 70, then we'll absolutely work that out to figure, figure that into the equation with students.
And my last request, if you wouldn't mind keeping me in the loop with the Hornada situation.
Absolutely. And, and if you'd like, we could, we could invite you to join us on that, at some of those meetings, if you'd like, I'll, I'll invite you, and then.
Please do.
Leave it up there, so, thank you.
So, if you will allow me, I'm gonna, again, remind staff, once we notify one board member, we notify all. So when we notify Mr. Jaramillo, we'll copy all other board members just as a courtesy, and we do that just so that no one can say we're playing favorites with any particular board member.
Thank you.
And also, I'll just say to the board, that the deputy superintendent and I spent about an hour today going, having this exact same conversation, and so we may come to the board next month and say that we're gonna request to move 40,000 out of a different account.
An extra bus.
Crystal will let us. Just looking at the safety of those students, if, if we can't find room on buses, as he stated, it's gonna cost about 40,000.
Yes, ma'am.
And so that'll be something that we'll certainly look to. So I want to thank the board for bringing that information to our attention, and we want to certainly say thank you to your constituents. It does have our eye, and we will respond as quickly as we can because we know those children are walking tomorrow. We get it.
I'd like to move some of the testing dollars. Anyway, I apologize. Thank you very much, Mr. Hockes.
Absolutely.
Board members, anyone else like to say anything? Yes, Ms. Dahman?
Madam President, Mr. Hockes, I just want to know, I just want to thank you for all the work that you do, and Mr. Stout, for all the behind-the-scenes work that you guys are doing. Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
And, Mr. Hockes, I want to reiterate the same thing, and, you know, you don't realize how much work goes into preparing things, and, and I know our students and our families are grateful, as well as the teachers, so thank you from, from all of us for the work that you've done, to both of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. And if I may have one more last comment.
Sure.
We, we meet every Tuesday as a team, and I've got to tell you, I work for the most amazing team. First of all, Team LCPS, but our operations team, I, we call ourselves the silent team because nobody knows all the hard work, and nobody knows the late nights, and the, that my entire team's doing until something, till there's a broken pipe or a toilet doesn't flush, and then all of a sudden, we're really important. But I got to tell you, feeding kids, making sure they're safe and healthy and in a dry place. So I appreciate those comments for my team, they're absolutely amazing.
Let them know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, if I may, I just want to echo the same sentiment, so we all know, he's my deputy superintendent, I couldn't ask for a better deputy, I couldn't ask for a better colleague and a better brother, and I have to say, while I was out of town for the weekend, which I'm never allowed to go out again, I think he worked 24 hours each day, and I was not even thinking, it's the weekend before school starts. So I do want to say thank you, and I want to say a special thank you to Mr. Stout in the back of the room. We talked yesterday with the administrators in here. We heard from about 40 administrators who had visited schools, and they each had the same story, and that is, there was a leak, or there was an issue, and the team from Mr. Stout's office was there, and it was rectified. And so we heard that over and over again. And I know Ms. Irma constantly reminds me, we've never increased your budget, we have the same number of men for the number of school buildings we had 20 years ago. I understand that, and they still are rising to the occasion. So to both gentlemen and to your entire team, I say thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ewing, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, well, very positive there. Board items, we now have new business, and this is in regards to a settlement agreement and release between Teacher Publishing Group, Stenhouse Publishers, and Jeff Anderson and Los Cruces Public Schools. Does anyone want to address this issue, or we just go ahead and?
This is what we discussed in the exec, closed executive session, Madam President.
Okay.
And so I think I can just say to the public that we are certainly entering into an agreement with a publishing company in which we violated a copyright infringement. We certainly apologize publicly to that company, and we do have a plan in place to ensure that our professional learning staff will work with our teachers, principals, schools, and all staff members to understand copyright law as best we can. And so at this time, I would like to ask if the board would so consider approving our settlement.
Okay, so then I will entertain a motion to approve the settlement agreement and release between Teachers Publishing Group Incorporated, DBA, Stenhouse Publishers, Jeff Anderson, and Los Cruces Public Schools.
So move.
Okay?
I'll second that.
All right, Ms. Dahman, and we'll take it from Mr. Frank. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so that it has been approved, the settlement.
Thank you, Madam President.
And now we move on to our, the call for resolutions to send up to New Mexico School Board Association. We have the entire packet here, and I think we had 15 last time. And what, I, I went ahead and looked at them, and I've got the list here. Is it all right if we eliminate some at this point, or do we need to vote on them?
Uh.
This is just your discussion?
Yes, I think for just for discussion.
Okay.
So you certainly have the right to do that, Madam President.
Well, I'm, I'm just thinking that, that if we just go over one by one, and we can eliminate a few because there's just way too many, and then, or is that not appropriate?
Not an action item.
Okay, it's not an action item, okay.
Can we have a discussion, counsel?
All right.
So we can have discussion, but we can't actually take action on any of these?
All right.
But we can make it an action item at our next board meeting.
At our next board meeting, okay. So.
Madam President, I just wanted to say, I, I, did we, did we skip Dr. Lozano?
No, no, I would never skip Dr. Lozano.
He was on the consent agenda.
Oh, yeah, that's right, that's right. I was, I was following down here, so.
Have pointed that out to me already.
I, that's right.
We're doing just fine, thank you.
Thank you.
But I, we know we don't skip Dr. Lozano.
No, we absolutely would never skip Dr. Lozano.
I was looking out for you, see?
All three of us.
Yeah, I know. They're all pointing to you.
You're all pointing at us.
Okay. So Roberto's getting a little popular here. Maybe we should move him to a different section here.
And I'm trying to vote out resolutions, so we're doing really good. Okay?
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
With regard to the resolutions.
Yes.
Um, you know, I, when I looked over this packet, I was really proud of the things that, you know, we presented at the state level.
Sure.
Um, but I'm just wondering, you know, did any of them actually get passed? Um, and I, I mean, most of them I think were, were rejected. Um, that doesn't mean that it's still a really good idea to present them. And I'm, and I think we should consider some of them, repeating them.
Yes, some of them, yes.
Right. But I agree with you that we probably overwhelmed them.
Yes.
And so we need to thin out what we present.
I think that what happened is these go to the New Mexico School Board Association and then they weed them out. And so last time we were left, uh, fighting for gun reform. We were, uh, fighting for, uh, support DACA students. Uh, there was one other one that literally we had to stand up in support and nobody, and we were voted down. So, um, I know that, uh, the students took the gun safety issue, uh, for us and they put in a good fight as well. Um, and so we just need to see what, where do we want our, our efforts to go. And know that they go to New Mexico School Board Association. And I think, uh, Cameron has already made very clearly what he'd like to, what he proposes to take up to the pet, to, um, the legislature. And I think it's a really good idea. How do you feel about the gun safety issue again?
Well, Madam President, members of the board, Mr. Superintendent, um, the gun safety issue was definitely a pressing matter last year. And it's definitely something that needs to be examined every year as long as the problem is there. Um...
Right.
But this year, our focus, I, I, I obviously want to get together with my team first.
Okay.
Um, but my priority this year is going to be the shared vision about standardized testing.
Okay. So, um, then what I propose is, is that we study these, um, and you pick your top three or four or five or however many you think we should move forward with.
Okay.
Okay? If it's all 15, we'll, we'll do all 15. If, um, the, you have the hard copies here in front of you and Dr. Sanchez and, and Ms. Galván, um, this is their work, their, their handiwork. And maybe we want to, um, change some of the wording in some of these and simplify them perhaps. Okay? Does anyone have any other, uh, pressing ideas on this?
Madam President, when would you like us to, uh, choose?
Can we send our choices to, or do we have to vote on these, uh, at our next board meeting? We could do it at our work session.
So if, if staff can remember, we will, uh, we normally don't make, uh, action items at work sessions, but this needs to be an action item.
I think we need to, yes.
Just for timing. So at our next work session, we can allow the board to engage in discussion again. And then you can actually take action at that work session and choose your top whatever number the board so chooses.
Okay.
Um, we can't do any polling ahead of time or sending anything on email.
All right. That's fine.
Madam President, um, if I could, uh, I, I'd like to offer a different perspective. Um, I, I believe, uh, Mr. Frank, I, I, I understand what Mr. Frank is saying and, and that we are overwhelming. But as I look through these resolutions, um, I understand that, you know, maybe none of them would have, or that we're, we're actually, you know, uh, dealt on. But you know what? We make, we make statements with these. And every single one of them is important. Um, every single one of them at the time has been important. And so I don't know if it's our job to say, you know, we're going to simplify this for the people that, that, I think it's, it's their job to, to, to act on these things and, and it's, it's our job to be a voice. And I, I don't want to, uh, I guess the alternative perspective was I don't want to say, oh, we're, we're going to send the top two or, or, or the top one. Because you know what? I look in the, some of these things in here and you're talking about funding. You're talking about adequate transportation. You're talking about gun reform. You're talking about, um, of, of funding for, for teachers. You know, how, how can, all these things are important. And, and there were resolutions because of that. I don't know why we should, you know, it, it seems like, you know, uh, what makes us good as educators, uh, you know, what, what makes us, the, the skills that, that make us good at, at teaching are also the same schools, are the same skills that, that hurt us when we deal with politics. And because we're, we're so, you know, oh, we're going to, we're going to think, no, you know what? I, I don't think we need to do that. I, I, I honestly think we need to, to go up there and, and really, you know, these things are important to, and, and they say a statement. Uh, they make a statement.
And I agree with you, but let me explain what I mean. Uh, number one is maintain funding at 5.8, which was the original amount of funding that we got from, uh, the, the, the right...
Land grant.
Land grant, yes. Then we have number, the next one is adequate funding for transportation. Okay? That's a little bit different. But then number four is adequate funding according to the New Mexico Constitution. So then what I propose is one and two are posters.
See what you're saying?
You see? We can read, re...
We can consolidate some.
Consolidate some of them. I'm not saying that nothing is unimportant. Then there are several on the New Mexico Teach. Number six is New Mex, revised New Mexico Teach. And then we also have, um, number 12, which is exclude teacher attendance from New Mexico Teach. So there's two, another two that we can consolidate. Um, that's what I mean is to strengthen our argument, refine it into, uh, uh, you know, potentially we could go down to 10 where we put them together.
I agree.
And make it more meaningful. Uh, the other thing, um, support DACA students, I think that was number five. The last time, uh, we had board members saying they didn't know what DACA was. They didn't know what DAPA was. And they said, "We were not lawyers and we should not be dealing with them." It really incensed me when they said that. Uh, so I think we need to help educate.
Let's clarify for the public. It's not our board members saying they didn't know what DACA or DAPA. It's other board members in the state. So we have to, we have to remind ourselves.
You see, that was...
Not, not that we're the most omniscient of all, but I think as a board and as a district, we are a little more advanced than some of our friends around us.
More evolved. Uh, so this is, that's what my, my, um, my consideration is, is not eliminating things, but refining our ask. Yes, ma'am?
May I offer a, a slot?
Yes, please.
Thank you, Madam President. I think consolidation is one of the key things to consider as you were discussing. You may want to consider what the end in mind is. You want the New Mexico School Boards to select your resolution.
Exactly.
So that it goes on to the LESC or the, the governor or whomever you say that it should go to. Perhaps you could have your lobbyists do a little bit of research with some other of the, uh, bigger school districts to find out what are their resolutions. If they have some of the same ones, then if we have a repetitive resolution compared to also Grants, Roswell, Santa Fe, that gives you more power to then try to get to the end result, which is the NMSBA trying to select your resolution.
Exactly. So that, that's an excellent recommendation and I think we will definitely...
So Ms. Galván, since it was your idea, let me give you an assignment.
[laughing]
If, if you will call our lobbyists tomorrow and Mr. Bolzano will, uh, I, he's probably, he's not here tonight, but he's probably watching us, um, uh, see if he can gather any information. And then once you have that, if you would just, um, notify all board members and copy the executive cabinet on anything that we discover.
And say, for instance, uh, we have promote civil public discourse and then the next one is curriculum and training on subject of bullying. I think those are semi-related.
Yes.
You know, one is discourse with each other and then the fact that we want to eliminate bullying in Las Cruces Public Schools. So, uh, this is the kind of thing that I'm talking about. And then of course, testing. Testing is, is of critical importance. And, uh, so, um, and I think that that's all we need to do.
So, Madam President...
Ms. Galván, do you, do you think you've gathered enough information from us tonight?
Right now.
To, um, to kind of redo this packet, um, consolidating things, of course, updating them? For example, um, in the teacher evaluation plan, there have been changes. So, so that of course has to be reflected in what we would write up. But do you think you have enough that you could, like, present a draft?
We could, we rot, we're going to need to re-watch the tape, listen to some of the comments that the president made. And then if the board so allows us, um, we could begin to package some of these together and then also bring them separately. Um, because I'm going to defer to legal counsel. We would be allowed to repackage these because they would, it would still be involved in a discussion with the board. We just can't poll the board as we're repacking them. Is that correct?
Right. And I think once, if I may, Madam President, once it's listed as an action item, then you could go through a series of, of polling as part of your vote, uh, in that board meeting. But tonight, uh, it would, it would be...
And that's fine. I understand. Um, I, I wanted to say, could we send ideas to Ms. Galván at this point? That would be...
I think that's most appropriate. So individually, and, and we just don't want you copying each other. Just send them to her.
No, 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 no. We're only going to communicate with her directly.
And then that'll give you an idea. Yes. And then let's, um, for, so for staff, um, if we could have the full package and then everything Ms. Galván puts together so that in discussions, if the board begins to say, "No, I want to go back to the original," we would have that. So, um, I'm looking at Maria back there somewhere. So when we make the copies next week or the next board meeting, let's have this original packet again, but then whatever work that, uh, Ms. Galván puts together. Does that sound okay?
I think it does.
Yes. And if we need to, we could probably extend it to the next board meeting, but it would be preferable to not. Uh, it just...
You had a, some kind of deadline, didn't you?
It's the 15th of September, but I think we can call up, uh, NMSBA and they would grant us a few extra days.
Tina, can you work on that one? And then we'll have everything ready for the next board meeting.
We need to. Okay. All right. So, all right. Well, that's good. We, we did make some progress on that. And that takes us on to, uh, board member reports. Um, anybody have anything to say?
I do.
Yes, Ms. Dolman.
Would you want to start with me or?
Yes, please. Okay. It's easier for me to just go like this.
It's not me. Uh-uh. It's not you.
It's not me. It was you.
We're pointing fingers at each other now. Oh, my goodness.
Okay. Well, um, July 13th through 15th, this summer I had the opportunity to attend the New Mexico School Board Association Leadership Retreat in Cloudcroft, New Mexico. It was an excellent way to network with other board members across our state. We shared our celebrations as well as challenges the new year will bring. I listened and learned so much as I always do from our fine attorney's firm, Walsh, Gallegos, Trevino, Russo and Kyle. They always do an incredible job presenting difficult concepts. I briefly met with the new Secretary of Education, Mr. Christopher Ruskowski. We hope that he will truly assess, reassess our current, um, education climate and make adjustments to our state mandate that will impact our children and teachers in a more positive manner. And then August 5th, NEA Las Cruces invited the board to attend an encuentro, exchange for social justice in education. The workshop collabora, collaborated with our new, with our neighbors in El Paso. It was a very impactful workshop because the examples El Paso used came directly from the barrio I grew up in, Sherman Projects. We discussed how economic segregation is driving a bigger wedge and wider learning gap for our underprivileged. We exchanged best practices and shared empowering strategies for our classrooms and our communities. We also shared ideas on changing the community's climate on education, focusing on a friendlier, student-based environment and embracing restorative justice, which focuses on working with our students' challenges, not punishing the student for situations out of their control. Lastly, I also enjoyed the White Sands School kickoff last Thursday. Even though my husband has worked on post for 35 years, I had never visited the school. What a gem we have out there. The positive energy, parent participation and the excitement of the new school year was electric. I was so impressed with their sense of community and overall motivation. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Dolman. That was very comprehensive. Thank you. Mr. Frank?
So I also went to Cloudcroft and learned a lot of really good stuff. Um, and I was out at White Sands on Thursday, um, and, uh, helped, you know, greet the, um, the students and the parents, um, and the faculty. So that was pretty exciting. And I guess that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Frank.
You're welcome.
Um, yeah, I, I would like, I, I just wanted to say that I had the privilege and the honor to, um, address the administrators at the administrative retreat. And, um, I, I, I got up there. I was, I was pretty nervous, uh, speaking to the people that I admire the most and I've grown up admiring the most, and that's the educators and especially administration. And I said that in my, in my presentation. I, I teased a little bit because I said that, uh, Señora Flores asked me to do this and you don't say no to Señora Flores.
[laughing]
But, uh, it truly was, uh, it truly was.
Gee.
It, it truly was an honor. And I, I really appreciate that, that you gave me that opportunity to do that. And, um, uh, I really enjoyed it. And, and because of that, you know, two other principals asked me to go do the same presentation at El Alameda in Loma Heights and I really enjoyed, um, being there as well. Um, the last couple of things I just want to bring up is that, you know, we're, we're in full swing right now and I just want to make, uh, you know, and we can talk about this a little bit later. It's not any, uh, on any, um, agenda item or anything like that. But, you know, um, as, as a, a former athlete, high school athlete, I, I want to make sure that, that, you know, uh, our volleyball players, our soccer players, our, our, our football players, our, um, a, all athletes, uh, across the board, um, are, are, make sure that we are, are, are safe. And, um, and I, you know, we had a, an incident last, last year where, you know, AD machine and, and I want to make sure that, that those, that we're looking at that and making sure that those AD machines, you know, at football games, I know that we've addressed that at, at games and, and at things like that. And, but there are many days that people, that, that these children are, are, are practicing. And, and I just want to make sure that we're addressing those, those concerns of, uh, because there's a lot more practice days than there are games. And, and so I just want to put that in the back of our head and, and making sure that we have the right equipment, um, at the right time. Because, uh, if we do this as proactive rather than reactive, then we could save lives. And so I want to make sure that, that, that is addressed at some point. Um, the, the last thing I want to say is that I, in, I was, uh, elected in February. I took office in March and I, uh, one of my first meetings, I, I, I talked a little bit about, uh, a proposal for a bag, uh, fee. And I just wanted to let you guys know that I haven't forgot about it. I've taken the time, um, to not, not, uh, there's a lot of people that, that agreed with me, but I was really concerned with the people that did not agree with me. And I've taken the time, um, over the last several months, uh, to really listen and, um, uh, hear their concerns. And I have to say that I'm, I'm excited to, uh, hopefully bring something to you, um, that I think, uh, might be, uh, a little bit easier for everyone to, to take a hold. And I have to say, I, I wouldn't, it wasn't, it didn't come from me. I, I took it from somebody else. But, um, I would love the opportunity to address, um, that, um, maybe at our, at our next work session or, um, uh, in our next board meeting. So I can talk a little bit about that. But, um, other than that, um, I just want to, yeah, that's it.
Madam President, um, I, legal counsel's not going to allow us to engage in dialogue, but let me just say to staff, so to the deputy superintendent, uh, I was looking for Sandy. I don't see her here tonight. So we've talked previously about having nurses present at ball games. I think we need to revisit that conversation and look at what that cost factor would be or if we have the ability to give staff comp time for those hours worked. And then if we could actually do a presentation for the board, um, that's one more level of security, having a nurse present in case of the, uh, any tragedy that we saw before. Those nurses saved that child's life and it was by luck that they were there. So Deputy Superintendent, if you'll...
Can I comment or?
Counsel?
I really think...
Okay. So we'll, we'll, we'll work together in my office.
Okay.
That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jaramillo. And, you know, I, I'm so grateful that they do get, go out there and they do these things. I wasn't able to go to White Sands. They were there. I wasn't able to be with the principals. He was there. I appreciate the work that all of you do. Thank you so much. And Mr. Cus, Custer, did you have a comment?
I have pretty much to add that I did attend the, the Cloudcroft Conference and like always, there's always so much to learn. Uh, very excited about what's, uh, the new school you're coming, coming in. And, uh, I refer to, um, some of us refer to, uh, to our, our, our board as the dream team. But, uh, I think a dream team is not only us. So I see that the level of professionalism that is, uh, coming to, and to play here with it, especially with the, the, uh, the first year of school. And I just think the dream team is encompasses the whole Las Cruces, the school district.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, well, I'd like to close with, uh, I've got, I've got plenty to say here at today. Uh, there, you know, we, we keep working during the summer. There have been many meetings with different individuals this summer, bond advisory meetings with the chamber, our community school initiative and even helping my daughter as she prepared for the bar exam. Now back to school, it was a great beginning for all. I was privileged to speak to administrators and I asked them to stop bullying in our schools. Then I attended the restorative justice training that, uh, Ms. Dolman was talking about and learned some simple practices. Our immediate response is, who is to blame? What rule was broken? And what is the punishment? That's the way we as educators sometimes, two children clash, bang, crying. They come to us and that's our immediate response. The restorative response is, who is involved? What harm has been done? And how can we make it right? So that's a new perspective and I myself need to think in that regard. It's not, it's not our, our immediate response, but there's a more gentler... but there's a more gentler, kinder way of responding to children that are hurting. What we have used before doesn't always work, so a change is needed in addressing troublesome behaviors. Now, the other thing that, that's been on my mind is, and I forgot to put it in my report, is how to address how school leaders can support undocumented students. And this I got from the internet, probably Education Weekly. You lead with student-centered school values. You actively confront discrimination and xenophobia. You boost dialogue in the classroom, and you share information. So that's just to deal with undocumented students. Again, a continuous situation for many of our students. But then we have, our nation continues to spasm as some citizens are showing their hate more openly than ever before. The Southern Poverty, Southern Poverty Law Center came out with 10 ways to fight hate. As teachers trying to explain what happened in Charlottesville and how to respond, this may help. And all you have to do is put in SPLC, and you can find this on the internet. They have the 10 ways are, one is act, do something. Two, join forces with allies and people, churches, schools, civic groups, wherever you... And Las Cruces is great about that. We had a march on Sunday. I wasn't able to go, but people were out there marching on Sunday evening. Three, support victims. If you know them, let them know you support them, help them. Four, speak up, speak up for unity. Number five, educate yourself. Number six, create an alternative. If we're, if we're fighting hate, we don't fight with hate, we fight with peace. Number seven, pressure leaders. So wherever we go, wherever we talk to, let's, and I know our leader here in our district is right there supporting us, we are all supporting each other. But we can pressure our councilmen, our congressmen, whoever you get in contact with. And there are people running for office right now, so it's a good time to talk to them about it. Stay engaged, reach out to others, your neighbors, your friends, talk about it. Don't hide from it, don't be polite and say nothing. I have friends that say things that I find that bother me, and I, and now I speak up. I don't say, you know what, I really don't appreciate what you just said. And that's really hard to do with friends. Teach acceptance, accept each other for what we are, and dig deeper. Because in ourselves, we can find that hate too. So we need to start here before we can change what's out there. On the news, I heard one of the chants used in the rally. We will not be replaced by anyone. So these men that were marching are afraid of being replaced. They're afraid. Well, I just want to let them know, no one wants to replace them. We just want to live in harmony. I can never finish anything.
Thank you, Señora Flores.
Just teach peace, please, that's all we need to do.
Madam President, if I may, we have, I see Andres in the back of the room, and I see Dr. Lozano here. And so we've taken that step here. We have a restorative justice program, and we have a restorative justice division. I couldn't be prouder of these two young men and the work that they do and what they stand for. And so to our students and to our community, we are with you, we are behind you. And I think we are all unified in the same message.
I know, I know we are, Dr. Ewing, thank you.
Thank you for delivering the message, and we are fighting. And so I'm gonna say, gentlemen, Ms. Galván doesn't allow me to say boys and girls, but gentlemen, you've heard the mission, we still have to fight.
Right, so thank you for putting up with me. We do have a calendar of future meetings, so make sure you go over that. And if we have nothing further to say, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Frank. Ms. Dolman, all in favor?
Aye.
And good night.
So to staff in the room?